Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. At 6:00 PM, this meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20. We will move right into the roll call and call to order. Please, Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen.
Chair Governor.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Present.
Member Hollins.
Here.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm here. Chair Poiety.
Present.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Rita Gardner. I saw her, but...
She's here.
Okay, she is here. We're all present in account of war.
Wonderful. So we call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 9, 2020?
Let's, um, so we have, I want to go through before we take the motion, I'm sorry, Member Hollins, what I'd like to do, I'm seeing minutes from several meetings, and I'm hoping we could just use one motion to approve them all, if that's okay, or try, anyway.
I saw two sets, there was the non-public, and then the 20, December 9, was there more than that?
Yes, there were six sets sent to us in the packet.
Thank you. I also have six sets. And I was actually going to ask Recording Secretary Susan Farber to confirm for me. I'd like to read the dates and confirm that we're all, everything that we have is what we're voting on. I have December 4, December 9, December 15, December 17, December 29, and January 6.
Sorry, I didn't see them all.
Okay.
So we're asking for confirmation from Recording Secretary about whether those are the full roster of minutes?
Yes, or, I mean, the Secretary Johnson Musad could also confirm that for me. With one member having confusion, it's likely there's others with confusion.
If Susan Farber has confirmation on that, it might take me a few minutes to fully confirm, to be honest.
Okay, I think she's just unmuted.
I see it now, they're calling one file.
Yeah, I can show off my mug while we're waiting for everybody to see. You're on mute. You've been warned.
I, of course, said that we all need one for when...
Hang on, Mayor Rita Gardner, yes, yes, we're working on that.
Okay, so I have minutes up for December 4, December 9, December 15, December 17, December 29, and January 6.
That meets my list as well.
Six sets of minutes.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to make sure that that was accurate and that everyone knows what we're voting on. But I would like to try to take a motion to approve all six sets in one motion, and if folks have anything they need for corrections, they can just do that during the discussion and just let us know which set of minutes you're talking about. Do I have a motion to approve all six sets?
So moved.
Member Wall, in a second?
Second.
Member Johnson Musad, okay, any discussion of any of those six sets of minutes? I'm not hearing any, shall we move to a vote?
Member Karen? Is that a yes?
Let's see.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you all for doing it that way, it just is a little bit more efficient. And of course, if someone realizes later there's a change that needs to be made to minutes, we can bring it up at a future meeting and make that change. Okay, now we'll move right into public comment. For those who are new to how we do it here at the school committee, the first folks that we will take for public comment should put their name in the chat, and we will call on people in the order those are typed in, and after that, we will take anyone who's on the phone line. I'm seeing a few, it looks like, come up. Member Johnson Musad, whenever you're ready, we can start.
Great, Ann Valentine?
Ann, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely, go ahead, you have three minutes, just let us know also your full name and where you live.
Sure, my name is Ann Valentine, I live in Hatfield. I am right now wearing my union hat, and I see that on the agenda is the superintendent search process, so I'm pretty sure that my comments will be applicable to... I just wanted to ask, I know that you can't reply, but I like to put it out there that in the previous superintendent search, there were union members, or one member at least on the superintendent search, and I'm hoping that that is a courtesy that will be granted again for the superintendent search this year. There was also just a regular teacher representative as well, so I'm just hoping that that courtesy will once again be extended to a member of the union as you move forward with your search. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Susan Worgaftik?
Thank you. Susan Worgaftik, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Unfortunately, I've lost my video, so I'm not sure what happened, but I am also...
Now we lost your audio.
And we've lost your audio.
Okay, now we go, there we go.
Go ahead.
I'm also commenting on the superintendent's search.
And where do you live?
I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield.
Just the town.
Greenfield.
In Greenfield, okay, thank you.
And I just want to encourage the committee to have as broad a grouping of people involved in that search as possible, including parents of special needs children, the parents from each of these, the school categories, if not each school, and parents of color, and I also support the previous caller's mention of union members, but just to make sure that every constituency that's involved in this process is represented, so that we have someone who really speaks for the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have anyone else?
No one else in the chat, Chair Poiety?
Okay, thank you. So now, anyone who's on the line with us by phone or can't otherwise indicate in the chat that they're interested in public comment, go ahead and don't be shy, let us know. Is that public comment, or just some coughing? I'm not hearing any other public comment right now, everyone agree? Okay.
I don't see anybody trying to get in.
Okay, thank you, thank you all. And we'll move into the next item on the agenda, committee reports. I have a couple of things tonight that I meant to write down ahead of time, and I did not, so I'm just going to talk briefly, but quickly about a few things. First of all, I want to recognize our colleagues in the city council, their reorganization last week resulted in City Councilor-at-Large Penny Ricketts becoming president, and the vice president is Sheila Gilmore, I believe she's precinct six counselor. I want to recognize them and look forward to working with them in 2021. I also want to just point to, so when we voted on our minutes a few minutes ago, pun intended, there were minutes for about a month in time, a time period of about a month, and we met as a full school committee with public access to the meeting in December, on the 4th, on the 9th, on the 15th, on the 17th, and on the 29th, and then we met again last Wednesday, a week ago, on the 6th, a day that will likely be recognized across the world for something other than the Greenfield School Committee meeting. I digress. I just want to recognize everyone who participates in this process, obviously starting with my other school committee members, our staff in the schools, and our teachers, who all are working very, very hard in a very stressful environment. I'm not going to list everyone because I don't want to forget anyone, but I would, of course, want to recognize our students who are under tremendous stress and in a totally uncharted territory regarding their education, and that's of concern for everyone, particularly school committee members. And this is hard, this is a very difficult time for the district, we all know we're going into a superintendent search process, we've been managing a pandemic, and there's all kinds of challenges.
Salvation Army, they're now doing a project of sending Valentine cards to the elderly at local nursing homes.
And then for GHS TV, Mr. Leo Wolf and his class has published four editions of The Wave, an online media school website. Students, including me, have written articles and created videos about the Greenfield community. All additions are posted on the GHS website, so check it out.
The French Club hosted a virtual coffee house, and if you missed that, you can find the YouTube link on the district's YouTube channel, check it out, as it was a fantastic illustration of the talented students and staff at GHS.
Right now at GHS is midterm season. It began on Wednesday, January 6, and they go until Friday, January 22. The midterm exam schedule for remote allows students an opportunity to space out their studying over the course of three weeks to be better prepared for their exams. And personally for me, my midterm schedule is spaced out, and it gives me time to study, but the AP teachers are still giving out work, so I do have to balance studying and doing work as well. So the upperclassmen are, they have a lot of work to do right now, and hopefully we're not too stressed, but the teachers have been accommodating this, so yeah.
As Danny said, the structure works very well to space out times that you can study, and it doesn't get super overwhelming. Going into midterms, this was my first time, and I was very nervous, but they've gone a lot easier, and it's been a lot smoother than I was expecting, and it's, with the way it's spanned out, we have time to study and prepare, so I've been able to go into each midterm feeling more confident than I was expecting. At GHS, each student has been receiving another book/school supply bag to assist in remote learning. Students will receive additional school supplies, like notebooks, pens, pencils, highlighters, and stuff like that, as well as any curriculum resources some teachers wanted students to have and be able to access at home. There's also a green wave mask in each bag. Pickups started today at GHS from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and will continue tomorrow, Thursday, January 14, from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. If an alternative pickup time is needed, please just call the main office at GHS at 413-772-1350, extension 1005.
A virtual best buddies program going on at the school, so we continue our partnership with Special Olympics in Massachusetts. Remote learning can be isolating. This program looks to close that gap with our athletes. We will play games, write letters, and plan other activities. Using a grant from Special Olympics, all participants will receive a T-shirt and prizes for their participation. Contact Angela Mas or any of the paramedics if you would like to join the program.
Students at GHS can request tutoring from NHS members through the NHS Tutoring Google Classroom. Link to the classroom can be found on the All School Classroom. All a student needs to do is fill out the information on the Google Doc sheet in the tutoring classroom. The NHS Mental Health Group is still in development, will be focused on removing social stigmas around mental health, as well as providing students with self-care tips. Thank you.
You guys are all done? Yes? Okay, awesome. I don't know about everyone else, but these guys have become like the highlight of our meetings. I think it's, I think it's pretty exciting. I love the back and forth, I love the information. Thank you both for being here and being so consistent about being here, it's great to have you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, how about we move now into the subcommittee reports? Did we have subcommittees that have met recently that are needing to report out? Just give a holler.
I have a quick report.
Please, Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Subcommittee, I started the process of scheduling our first meeting. I see today we've got an additional member getting appointed, so look forward to looping Member Hollins in as well on the scheduling, but just wanted folks to know that that group kind of proved kind of right before the holiday, and we're getting started.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Member Johnson Musad? All right, who else has a report? I think I heard someone else.
I do.
Member Wall, please, go ahead.
We're going to have a meeting of the redrawing district lines at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, which sounded like a good idea when we set the thing up, but anyway. So everybody's invited, if you would like to come and participate, and it's, they are now going to be on the second Thursday at 9 o'clock, and on the 4th Thursday at 6:00. We wanted to make sure there was a time for everybody who would like to participate, so...
And you're saying 6:00 PM, not 6:00 AM, right?
6:00 PM, thank you very much. So would love to see anybody tomorrow.
Thank you, Member Wall. Any questions for her? Any other subcommittees that need to report? Okay, seeing none, we are now into the thick of the agenda. Budget review, fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. Let's see.
Andy, ask Andy.
Andy, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
Mr. Pekat, thank you for joining us this evening.
Not a problem.
Are you able to give us an overview of what you've provided in terms of budget information?
So what was included for the '21 was a document that was originally intended, I recognize it's not what you're normally used to seeing. It was originally intended for a budget finance subcommittee meeting that we had never scheduled. Obviously, with everything going on, it's totally understandable, but I'll share as far as '21 goes, the expenses that, if you remember, we were kind of having a placeholder of some expenses that we were waiting for to see if the city's cares would cover it. I'm happy to report that they got approved, so we are in the process of reclassing those expenses. What that is going to do is that is going to increase our available balance in school choice, so that is good news. And so, yeah, I mean, and also if you look and see some of the trends on spending with being remote, we're going to have some funds in lines that we could potentially realign for future use and/or, as has been done in the past, year-end reclasses to carry funds over in their allowable revolving accounts that we're able to do. We've had some discussions, I know, Member Hollins and I have had discussions electronically regarding the reporting that had been requested and voted on by the committee, that is never, we'll say formally, I'll say, in particular regarding revolving accounts. So I've been working with the business office to get it to that point, that is, you know, so that it adheres to what was voted on by the school committee going forward. In addition, in the report and what we provided to the budget finance subcommittee were reports regarding history of the use of revolving accounts, so that we can look into that as we begin and have begun, honestly, our FY '22, I'll say preliminary budget discussions. Admittedly, I can tell you regarding FY '22, what we have done in the business office, in a sense, is, for lack of a better phrase, I have rolled over, in a sense, everything as it currently stands, and for FY '22 is, if you want to think of it, it's kind of baseline, and then obviously with direction and input from administration and school committee and budget finance subcommittee to come to craft what will be our FY '22 requested proposed budget.
Thank you for that. So with that introduction, I do want to have a discussion, and I think it makes sense, if I am correct, and I know someone will correct me if I'm not, that we are in line to reauthorize the fiscal year '21 budget. Am I right that that vote needs to take place?
Yes.
Yes, and admittedly, we will, and again, another discussion I had with Member Ekstrom, it'd be time, because if you remember, we had done that and presented it, and again, said with no tone or criticism that when real things get in the way, in these times, we never were able to do it back in October, so it'd be time, which we are also doing in the business office, for I'll say a refresh of that, so that we'll do a revision, especially in light of the fact that we have now, like, the verification of the city chairs funding being through, so we'll be able to come through with, I'll say, an even revised, 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 if you will, FY '21.
It sounds a little like Monty Python, if you ask me.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Yes, of course, that's how it was, so would, are we prepared for a motion? And is what you presented us this evening the revision we would want to be voting on? I guess is my question.
I would say no, that was, again, because I didn't make any changes, because there was no vote yet, so I was waiting for a vote to say, and so, which is why I think now, as we're talking, to do the revision of the revision, so then I can do, like I did back for the October one, present the original budget, and then I'll say with revised as of January 15, say, or something.
I see.
And also map out the changes that had occurred, and then, you know, ask for the committee's vote on that one.
Okay, so for tonight, is, are we comfortable just having a discussion without having a motion on the table? I, Member Hollins is on my screen, I see her nodding, this is her favorite type of school committee discussion, I'm aware of that. I would ask that Secretary Johnson Musad interrupt us for any motion if we appear to be going, straying from what we are intending to do, if that works. Okay.
Okay, my pleasure.
Okay, so I will open it up for questions for Andy Pekat at this point. Do we have members who have questions?
I have a question.
Please, Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
This may be a budget 101-type question, but you mentioned, was it chairs funding or cares funding that got approved by the city? Can you go over what that is?
Sure, that's the federal funding that came from the CARES Act that was passed previously, not the one that's being discussed now, this is the second round. So cities received funding, as well as schools did, you know, the schools received three pockets, if you will, there was a remote technology grant, there was this, what's commonly called the e-Surf grant, and then there was the coronavirus relief fund. City received funding as well. The city's funding, however, was a little more restrictive, we'll say, they had to, and I'll say, a credit to the city is that in addition to offering it up for what they needed for PPP, PPE on their end, and other things regarding health and safety, they had funds available, because one of the allowable expenses were things related to remote technology. And so what was done was, when this first happened in the spring, the district at the time, you know, purchased Chromebooks for anticipation of remote instruction, with hopes and anticipation that there would be funding coming, whether it was through the grants and/or through the city side CARES funding. And what happened was the CARES funding came through, it was an allowable expense on the city side, the city was able to cover the expenses for those, in addition to some other things. So that's what it's from, it's from the federal monies that came in from the first CARES Act, related to the COVID relief support.
Thank you.
Other questions? I see Member Hollins with her hand up, go ahead, Member Hollins.
Andy, thanks for your work on the budget. In many of the years in the last decade, the school committee has been able to hedge its unforeseen special ed specialty costs by paying forward, as the statute allows, summer tuitions. It's usually in the range of $180,000 to $200,000, and that's been paid, most of the years has been paid either by a balance in the school committee budget, or appealing to the city council for some funding they have set aside for special ed backup. And if this unusual year with unusual budgeting and the wonderful new revenue that the city has provided related to COVID expenses, if our balance would allow us to set that aside, that would be, I guess my question, do you anticipate we might have a balance that allows us to set aside money that helps us with the FY '22 budget by paying ahead summer tuition, as we've done in private years?
Absolutely, I would say, and there are different mechanisms, I know that's been a practice there, other things could be, you know, there is the, there's the amount that you're allowed to carry over in circuit breaker, so just for bookkeeping purposes, for example, I know this year, when I came on, we did not pay for the summer tuitions, but what we did was we had more that we carried over in circuit breaker, so the net impact was the same in helping out the subsequent year. So I do anticipate being able to do something along those lines, whether it's prepay or carryover for FY '22 as well. So yes, you're correct.
Another question, Member Hollins?
Yes, I just will say, it's really hard to review the budgets without a paper copy, maybe those of us that have small screens at home, that they could be mailed to us at least once, so we can have a working document. But I do have a question. When I was able to review parts of the documents you sent, I had a question and wondered if you would explain the intent of line 16, which is school-wide undistributed salary, and there's one other salary line like this that's, has $347,000 in it, I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but maybe in budget committee, if those two lines could be explained?
Which tab are you looking at?
I would...
Master, cost center, sort, destiny function, sort?
I found it on...
It was the first cap.
I found it online, too, of the master.
Yes, there's something called school-wide undistributed salary, it was budgeted at $55,000, there's $47,000 balance. I'm just not sure whether that's what we, what it is anymore.
So that $55 was related to, when we look at the budget, the undistributed category, I agree, that's a misnomer, that's something I think from the conversion to munis, but that $55 was set for, and why there's a charge there, it could be, it needs to be reclassed, but that $55 was the local appropriated amount for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. So, yeah, so again, I would agree that that's, that's what it was for, why there's a charge, since we don't have one, that clearly, you know, I'll look into that, and we might end up having, I would say, Hollins, since the purpose have to do an expense reclass. The other one that I believe you're talking about was down in the $300-some-odd-thousand, I think it was in like the legal settlement area.
Yes.
That was, that was the, if you remember, in the summer, when we did the reductions in force and the layoffs, we actually went below what the city appropriation was, so I just put that there, so that we could have a balance. So I just put that there so that we could have a balance to enter into Munis. So when, as part of this exercise of doing the revision of the revision, that will disappear and those funds will be allocated to appropriate lines. But for all intents and purposes, it was strictly just a placeholder to get us to a balanced number to enter into Munis.
It caught my attention, being called legal settlements. And I thought, what have we settled there? I have one other question. We have a few critical positions that are unfilled. The one that crosses my mind is we had an assistant director of special ed who became our director, leaving that position unfilled. So the director's doing two positions. And we're very aware we need administrative attention in special ed. So my question is, do you foresee we have enough money going forward the second half of this year to fill in a couple of critical need positions that are vacant?
I would say yes, definitely.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Another question. Amy, are you trying to say something?
Thank you. Wait, you're on mute, chair.
I need the mug.
I did see the mayor with her hand up. Mayor Weidergartner, did you have, no? Okay.
No, no, no. No, I'm a Lewis, you know, whatever.
Secretary Johnson Musad, you go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm getting close to my second. I don't know, maybe I'm at about a year and a half as a school committee member. So I'm still a little fuzzy not being on the budget subcommittee, how this all works. So what are the main milestones of the next task for the school committee? It sounds like we need to update the FY21 budget and then start working on FY22. But what will be the kind of like main meetings and steps along the way?
So from my point of view, what would, what, at least my experience has been that, you know, a lot of this work and direction to be provided from the budget finance subcommittee and discussions regarding FY22. We have had meetings and discussions with the city, actually just this past Monday, regarding the picture of FY22 as a whole, including the city side. So, you know, and in light of the fact that, based on the current and unique situations we find ourselves in with 21, with the fact that we are hearing that, and all signs point to yes, that there's going to be a second round of cares funding with the new administration down in DC. And even that, those funds they're talking about being even three, three times more than what we got this past time around. So there's those types of discussions. But right now, it's kind of the, with direction from the budget finance subcommittee. And then I guess working with administration regarding their needs. I mean, I'm a fan, honestly, even though we find ourselves in these very unique times of still developing the needs-based budget as to what it is that is needed based on administrative input. And then the discussion starts regarding, you know, how close we could get to meeting those needs. And then even having discussions regarding, you know, whether it's prioritizing the needs, you know, and what have you. So I'd say the next steps from my point of view would be budget finance subcommittee and then working with administration on getting from them their FY22 needs. But like I said, for all intents and purposes now, I have, for lack of a better phrase, a baseline level service budget based on what FY21 is now.
And when you say needs-based, does that mean identifying what the school district's needs actually are and what they would cost? And then prioritizing back from there, given many resource limitations?
Exactly, exactly. We would have a discussion and, you know, the, I would like, you know, being, I'll say, a true practitioner of site and program-based budgeting, you know, the administrators with budget authority would be the ones, in my opinion, that would be presenting, you know, to us as to, you know, and prioritizing their needs. And then obviously, school committee, you know, and with all the standard things, I'd say from my point of view of making sure it aligns with strategic planning, district improvement, school improvement planning, and needs based on data, that we would be presenting that to the committee as a whole for A, understanding and B, subsequent approval. In some manner, based on funding availability, you're correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, Ekstrom.
Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
So I do want to say out loud, and it's going to be obvious, this is going to be a really strange year to try and plan a budget because, I mean, who knows? Assuming that we're all COVIDed, vaccinated or whatever, and that it's not a threat so much as it is now. We can, my guess is that we can, we can look at what our budget was this year and sort of assume that for next year. But I think it's probably going to increase because I would imagine that our students are going to need a lot more help. And, you know, you've been at home for a year and now you're in school and trying to have someone sit still for eight hours a day when they've been at home. And I don't know, I think it's, I think it's going to be a difficult year. And I think it's going to be really hard for us to accurately budget. I don't, I don't want to naysay by any means, but I think that there is a real piece of mystery that's going to be there, not just for us, but for every school district. That's all. Mute, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you, member Ekstrom. And member Hollins, did you have another question?
Yes, I had one other question. Andy, I wasn't able to see actually all the lines in the budget document. But in the original budget document for this year, I had voiced a concern about a line called computer technology equipment, I think. And for the entire year, it was budgeted, I'm just recalling it, $14,400, which is, I think we have well over 1,000 pieces of equipment. We have to have some replacements. And I know there was a gift, it was a gift this year that we had so much money for computers. But that particular line item seems really out of whack at 14,000 for the whole district for a year, if there's time to think about that. Thank you.
Yes, I see that. And it's possible that some of that had been funded directly by E-Rate. But even still, it's worthy of looking at. It's, I would agree with you. It's, for the amount of technology that we have and any district for that matter, a district-wide technology amount of 14,000. So, and in light of the fact, I don't have access yet to previous records, the details. So I'll be working with, again, it's Dr. Holsberg about what indeed that was and, you know, what for all intents and purposes does it cover? And then also what isn't being covered by that? That obviously would then go into, planning-wise, you know, I look at it almost along the lines of the old-school textbook adoption cycle where there should be something along the same lines for technology replacement. And, you know, if it's not being funded through the capital, which we do know has always been a debate one way or the other, then it should be a part of operating budget. So I agree.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that.
Go ahead.
This is Ekstrom. The sped technology district-wide is $6,000. I mean, I've had to buy tech for my kid, like software, and for, just for one person is 3,000. So 6,000 is probably fairly low as well. Just putting it out there.
Yeah, it sounds like that's an area that is ripe for some assistance at multiple levels beyond our school and fair city. Other questions from school committee members? All right. Thank you, Andy, very much for all of that. Thank you for joining us for the discussion.
Hello.
All right, so we are on to item six on the agenda. And that is an athletics update and a phase two learning update as well. Let's start with athletics. I know I saw Mike Kucheski was here with us. And in the materials for the meeting tonight, there is an email from the coach. But I am guessing he can explain to us what is, what's happening and provide an update, and we'll start there.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, so the email that I sent last week to Superintendent Harper was to delay our in-person practices this week, which started on Monday. We delayed it in Greenfield to just be virtual practices. After conversations with our nurse and board of health, I felt that it was safe for us to do virtual learning, virtual practices, and we're better off that way. So the change date for us to be in the gym now is going to be on the 19th. And I also was thinking of kind of coinciding on what was talked about at the last school committee meeting of phase two in-person learning for the school. So kind of coincided that. And also, my decision was easier to do that because we, as athletic bubble in hockey and in Franklin County, pushed the date for games to later. So right now, basketball won't have, excuse me, won't have games until the 26th of January. And hockey is now January 30th. So it cuts the amount of games down that we're going to have. But we felt that as athletic directors, that it was moving forward would be safer for our kids. And just looking at things that are going, that's kind of what we're all about, is to make sure that we're playing, but also make sure that is as safe as possible for the kids. So kind of that's where we're at right now. The letter that I gave Chair Prayati last week, the only thing that's changed on it is the dates. And I can say those again if need be, but everything else is status quo. We'll start basketball on Tuesday, the 19th, and hockey Monday, the 18th for skills and drills.
Awesome, thanks for the update. So what I think we'll do right now is I would take a motion to approve winter sports participation in skills and drills to January 18th for hockey and January 19th for basketball. I'm not sure if we need to put the games in there, but we can if we... Mike, go ahead.
So the vote that happened in December was that we would go with skills and drills. And then if the state guidelines have not changed, we would be allowed to play contests.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind everybody of that one.
Okay. So a motion to approve winter sports participation in skills and drills, January 18th for hockey and January 19th for basketball, with competitions beginning based on state guidelines. Does that work?
Blinded by me.
Okay, great. Member Karen makes the motion in a second.
Second.
I have no idea. Member Ekstrom, okay. Let's have discussion.
I have a question.
Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
So tell me how it was. So what did you hear from the board of health that led to your discussion or led to your decision? I'm sorry.
I can't really tell you that because of the HEPA laws, but it involves some of our student athletes. And I just felt that it was to, it was just better off for us. Instead of rumors getting out of there, I'll make the decision. And anybody has any questions, they can come see me.
Okay, great. I didn't know if there was some piece that we, anyway, thank you.
It was the individual decision that I, that I felt that it was, I strongly have an opinion on it and felt that after talking to our nurse and principal, they thought it was a great idea that we would do it this way.
Great, no, that's, that's fine with me.
Okay. Thank you for that, both of you. Other questions from school committee members?
I have a question.
I have questions.
I heard member Johnson Musad and then member Hollins.
Thanks for this. I'm wondering about hockey starting on the 18th. That's MLK Day, I think. Do you guys often have skills and drills on holidays? Is that?
The way it works for ice hockey is when you get the ice time, that's when you get it. So if it's 6:30 in the morning on a Sunday, that's when we got to go.
Got it, great, thank you.
And really, you know, the only, I think the only time that really hockey doesn't practice or play is Christmas and New Year's. And so it's, it's one of those things, there's one ice rink and it's servicing all of Franklin County. So you got to get the ice when you can get it.
Enjoy your holiday on the ice.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. And then it was member Hollins, I believe, go ahead.
Yes. Coach, I wanted to ask if there's a certain element of parent choice, of student choice, I imagine, in these circumstances. I wanted to know if you had a student on a team that had a reason to not want to participate until they had the option of a vaccine? Is that allowed? And if so, can the student return to play afterwards?
So right now, the vaccines, oh, my dog's getting on me, hold on. Right now, the state law for the flu vaccine is not, does not become law until January, February 28th. And our winter season's going to be over. Nurse Avitri right now is working on a flu clinic for all our student athletes, if they have not been vaccinated yet, to get the flu vaccine. There's no, hasn't been any talk, and I haven't heard any talk from anybody about the COVID vaccine. And I think we're in phase two as teachers, like in February or March. But the flu vaccine does not become in effect until February 28th. And no parents have, well, there's parents that have inquired to me about it. But we have, you know, Nurse Avitri has taken care of it with the flu vaccine, with the flu clinic. Does that answer your question, Dr. Hollins?
No, I was specifically thinking about the pandemic and as some students may have parents who want them to wait. And I was just wondering, if that were the case or someone had a medical excuse, would they be able to rejoin the team when they felt they could?
I don't think we're going to hold anybody back. I don't think any of our coaches are going to say, no, you can't play when you come back. I think that's, that's fine. When somebody makes a decision like that, we're going to uphold that. Our coach is not going to be, not going to hold those kids like that.
Good, thanks.
Mayor Weidergartner, you are on my screen. Go ahead, I see your hand up.
Ah, that's right, I forget. Sometimes your screen doesn't show the same thing, mine does. I just, I received a letter today from interim health director Jennifer Hoffman. And I think I forwarded it to you, Chair Prayati. They will be meeting tomorrow. They will look at the athletic schedule based on the latest numbers. But I don't, I don't foresee a major issue from that, having discussed it with her. But just know that there will be a board of health meeting tomorrow and they may give their thoughts on all of this. Could I ask you, Mike? You mentioned basketball on the 26th, hockey on the 30th. That, what was that exactly? Is that your in-person training? I missed that piece, I'm sorry.
Sure, that's okay. In-person training will start for basketball on January 19th and for ice hockey on January 18th. And then, so we have to have 10 days of practice before.
Skills and drills, okay, got that.
And then we have to have 10 days of practice before our first competition.
So that's games on the 26th?
Excuse me?
That's games on the 26th and the 30th?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We felt that, we felt as ADs that the later it was, the better off we would be.
Yeah, good.
We, you know, I'll just say my last thing. I said, we've got to get these kids doing something. You know, you hear it every day, you know, and everybody's going to shake their head. And you, and you hear it. And I'm living with two of them right now. And I've, we've got to get them doing something. And it's, yeah, I'm just going to leave it at that.
We hear you. Any, any other questions from the school committee? Okay, so we will go ahead and move to a vote. Does anyone need the motion read again? Okay, let's go ahead and just move to a vote, member, or Secretary Johnson Musad, please.
You're on mute.
I'm like, I can't hear you, member Karen. You can't hear me. I'm member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner. Mayor Weidergardner.
Abstain.
The motion parries with one abstention.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Coach, for being here with us and answering all of our questions. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you very much, everybody. And, you know, just to let you know that we will be in communication with our school nurse and Board of Health through the school nurse at all times, and that we, we will communicate, and we will make sure that we will keep our kids safe. So I just want to make sure you all know that.
No question.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you very much.
You too. Take care. Okay, so the next piece of this agenda item. Okay, I got some feedback on there. Hang on. That sounds better. Okay, the Phase Two update with, has any, is the Superintendent, Superintendent Harper, have you joined us? Is she here? I'm not sure how this is going to go or if anything was prepared for us related to Phase Two update.
Member Karen?
Member Karen?
Um, I don't know. I can't speak for the Superintendent, but we did have a meeting today of the Joint Safety, a long name that I can never remember all the words to.
I call it the Joint Chiefs. It's the Joint Chiefs of the Greenfield Public Schools. You can call it that, too.
Perfect. I like that. So we did meet today, and as the mayor had mentioned, we did receive a letter from the Board of Health saying that they were going to meet tomorrow and discuss things. It was a really, a really robust conversation that didn't necessarily lead to a really strong answer, and I know that sounds a little crazy. Part of the conversation, and I'm really going to just report everybody else's conversation. I kind of left my opinion out of it for now as our tonight's conversation progresses. I'll probably make, make a decision, but, you know, the concerns are still there that we still are looking at data the soonest of January 2nd. So the concern is still we haven't reached two weeks past New Year's yet, which is when we would expect to see an increase still happening. But on the other hand, we are not increasing at the exponential, quite the exponential rate that we were increasing post Thanksgiving. It's still going up. Please do not mistake me when I say that. It's just not going quite as rapid as it was, and we don't know if there's just a delay in reporting or if it's just people may have learned the lesson post Thanksgiving. We're not sure yet, and that's difficult to know. It felt like the conversation circled around, we really need to know if we have enough staff. And the only way to know if we have enough staff is to set an opening date and then figure that out. And because some of our staff may be in quarantine, they may not be comfortable coming back. I'm not sure, and I don't want to speak to that, but I, we can't open programs without people, and everybody has their own concerns, and that's fair. So it kind of came to, let's try to move forward, let's pick a date, but school committee usually get to decide all of that. Have fun. Everybody really wants to keep everybody safe, and we really want to get the kids back, and how that happens is sort of up to us. And that's, hopefully I've represented their opinions well. Yeah, unless people have questions, I can answer those for sure.
So let's hold questions for a second. Thank you very much, Member Karen. I am wondering if Nurse Pam Owens is on the call at all, and I don't want to put her on the spot, but in, just in case, because I know she would be coordinating on that side if she is here and has anything else to add.
She's here. I see her.
Oh, I don't want to put you on the spot, Pam Owen. But if you're here and you can hear us and you're willing to unmute and chat with us, we would love to hear from you.
I, I didn't know that I could unmute myself.
You can. You absolutely can. Yes, go ahead.
I could, thank you. I concur with what Katie Karen shared. I was at the meeting. I'm not quite sure if you're asking me if schools are ready and able to meet the 19th opening or whether you're asking me more about my opinions about the data.
We would happily entertain your, your opinion as a nurse educator with our students for, your student safety being your priority to help us, yes, give an opinion, give some perspective to what, what we should be discussing and how we should look at the, at the question.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's unfortunate that it, out of sheer asynchrony that the Board of Health and the school committee meetings and the Joint Labor Management Committee on Safety, we're, we are, we meet out of sync. And so what's happening is that last week and this week, the schools are meeting before the, they, we receive advice from the Board of Health, and this really does confound the process a bit. And the truth is that after speaking with the interim director of the Department of Health over the weekend about last week's Board of Health meeting, and we part, we just decided to continue to pause at the school committee meeting last week because we didn't have enough weigh-in from Board of Health and because the metrics, the data is just not as robust as we would like right now to show trends. If we're going to see trends from the holidays, they're going to be three to four weeks into January, so we are not there yet, so it's hard to tell that if we delayed opening to the 19th because we thought we would get more information, we don't have that information now. We'll know within two weeks, but we don't have it right now. So I was hoping to have something more from the Board of Health tonight to help us with our decision. And again, they too are in a holding pattern if we're just looking at the epidemiology of it. So that just makes it, it just puts us in a bit of a limbo position right now. And so I don't think things are worse than they've been in terms of when we initially chose to pause, and there's been a slight decrease, but it's not significantly abated. So it, it, it's really hard to have a crystal ball about it. So the issues that were of concern to Board of Health and to ourselves about children not wearing masks, those continue to be concerns. I'm very excited to say that the State Department of Public Health is doing an early launch of pool testing that we would really like to be a part of. And what does that mean? It means that we would be able to weekly test our students and staff if they were in person in learning. And that, that possibility would change the game, the rules of the game and the playing field completely. So that makes me feel really excited. So in the interim, it's really going to be this sort of every couple of weeks, we have to keep looking at what is evolving and looking at the amount of spread. And what's happening with the spread is it's no longer older people's cohorts of age groups that are being affected. The most prominent group that's being affected now are 20 to 29-year-olds, and that's quickly followed by 10 to 19-year-olds. 10 to 19-year-olds, am I saying that? Yes. So we have young people who are actively getting the virus now and in, in an unprecedented number. So it's very important to keep that in mind when we're thinking about going back to schools. That being said, having a very small cohort of people being served in the schools, we, we have many of the safety measures in place to mitigate the risks. And so, so I can't give you like more than that. I wish that I could, but I really do defer to the public health expertise of the interim director of health, the Health Department, and I do feel like she is boots on the ground. And so a lot of what we look at is data that either has a two-week lag or it's countywide data versus citywide, but they get the calls into that office for all the cases evolving. So they see the trends much sooner than any of us are going to see it as publicly reported. So I, I really do think that they have some butt, butt of an inside perspective on things.
Thank you, Pam. I appreciate your update. So at this point, I would like to give school committee members an opportunity to ask questions of either Member Karen or Nurse Owen on any of this. I do want to review, at our last school committee meeting, we did vote to push out the restart of Phase Two in-person learning to, to, next Tuesday, the 19th, the day after the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And that is what we would currently do if we don't revote. Oops. Vote on something else. We could introduce a new motion. We could let that one stand. As, as Pam said, we, we don't have a good sync on the information. It's not quite two weeks out at this point. So I would, I'll give you now an opportunity to ask questions that you might have, and we'll try to identify if we need a new motion. Mayor Weidergardner, you are on my screen. Go ahead.
Hello there. When we say Phase Two in-person learning, I'm getting a little bit confused as we are talking about all students going back to school on the 19th.
No, the, no, the 39 students that had previously, previously been in the schools. It works out to be about five to six students in the, in the elementary schools and maybe a few more in, in the middle school and a few more than that, around 10 to 12 in the high school.
Okay. Then that, I just wanted a clarification on that, that we hadn't switched the horse here in the middle of the stream. So we're still talking about the 39 students and going up with the 29. I, I would, I would concur with Ms. Owen, and thank you for your comments tonight, Ms. Owen. It is a little tricky. We do watch the data weekly and, and sometimes, well, we watch it daily, but I'm just saying we discuss it weekly and where we're at. And when I say we, I'm talking about interim Health Director Hoffman and Chief Strahan and Chief Haig, well, the, the EOC team, the Emergency Ops team. And, you know, it's, it's correct. We don't have all the data yet. I suspect we'll have more data by the 19th, but, you know, if, if you need, if you feel you need extra information, I'm fairly certain that Jennifer Hoffman would provide it to you. I don't know if they would be willing to change their meeting date from Thursday to Wednesday. I can certainly discuss that with her. It's my understanding that the members of the Board of Health, some of whom do have day jobs, others don't, that's just sort of a traditional date that they've been meeting. They might be able to change, in which case at least we would be able to get the school committee information in a more timely manner with our school meetings. So let me see what I can do on that.
Okay. Well, and then the other thing is logistical around this, I do see your hand, Member Ekstrom, you were also on my screen, is we would not have an opportunity with the Martin Luther King Holiday to meet again, to make any different decision than we do tonight with, with the 19th being that Tuesday. Member, Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
So I'm wondering if to have more discussion about this, we need to reaffirm our vote or our motion from last week because, sorry. Yeah, I do want to talk about our return date, and so Glenn, what do we need to do? Can, can we just talk?
I think at this point, we can just talk. I, unless Secretary Johnson, I thought, I think I saw you say yep, but...
Well, I was going to say, should we finish the question and answer period and then get into the deliberation and try to have a little bit of a partition there?
Sure. So are there further questions? Thank you. Are there further questions for Member Karen or Pam Owen?
I have a question.
Sure, but Secretary Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I guess this is for you, Member Karen. One thing that occurred to me is that I, I see the logic of having Phase Two, you know, in-person learning before the highest needs students. They're the ones who are maybe most disproportionately impacted by remote learning. At the same time, they also seem to be the population that's at greatest risk of perhaps spreading the, the virus in terms of having maybe more challenges with wearing masks and maybe most at risk of, of dangerous complications if they were exposed to it because of health complications that some folks in, in that population have. So I just am wondering, is, is there a way that we're starting with the hardest group? Would it, I don't, I don't know what the sensitive way is to ask this question, but are, would, would there be any logic to starting with a population that had fewer high, fewer special needs? I don't, that's, it sounds kind of rude to ask, but I guess I need, I want to just kind of boldly ask a question that may seem incorrect.
Though you bring up a point I brought up today in the conversation. There is this dichotomy of, you know, these kids need us the most. They need the in-person learning the most. That's the reality, but they're also often the most at risk. And it's this really hard situation, but the reality actually is above us. DESI has asked us to put these kids back in first. The state has asked us to put these kids back in first. These are the kids who need it the most at the moment. And if we can get it right with the kids who are at the most risk, then we have faith that we're getting it right for the kids who can remember to, can, are capable of wearing their mask when they need to. And so I think that's part of this issue, and I, I agree. It's a hard question to talk about because we certainly are not trying to say any person is a higher risk or a bad, a bad risk, for lack of a better word, because it's certainly not. They're all important. They all should, we need to get them back as safely as we can, as quickly as we can across the board. That's just the reality for everybody at the moment. It is an important question to think about, and I don't, but this is just the directive we were given from the state. If you can't get everybody back, these are the people you start with. They need our help first, and then we move to the next group of people who need our help, and we process as quickly as we can through the, that section. Unfortunately, we haven't got any further than this yet, but that's the reality. And it is really important. I had another thought, but I've lost it for now, so.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you, Member Karen.
Member Ekstrom, can I follow up on that a little bit?
Please, go ahead.
So I can talk about this without feeling weird about it. Kids, the, so you don't, if you're kicking, so especially these kids are in high risk or at risk are the kids that are prioritized. We don't have to return our kids to school. Like Cameron, while she doesn't have any health concerns along those lines that absolutely other families do, you don't have to return under school. So she is still, continues at home because she's doing better at home, and it was just kind of like, you know what, let's, people who need this more and aren't able to, aren't doing as well should go do this. And I think that people who have real concerns that are related to health have been keeping their kids home. And I could absolutely be wrong, but I think, I think the reality is that if someone has some real sort of immune, immunology, immunization, immunity concerns, that's immunity. Maybe not. I think that they're keeping their children home.
And I would, I would just add on to that. I think we need to be cognizant that these 39 students represent a broad range of issues with learning remotely. It is... represent a broad range of issues with learning remotely. It is not just students who won't put masks on. It's not just students who are immune compromised. It's not just students with disabilities. English language learners are a portion of this group. So we can't generalize about who they represent. It's really important that we look at student safety as a whole to the best of our ability. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to, I guess, I just wanted to thank you, Chair Poiroti, and Vice Chair Ekstrom, and Member Karen for that very helpful response to my perhaps slightly ignorant questions. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. And it was not ignorant. You were speaking from where you needed to have understanding. That's, we just need to work with where we're all at. Yeah, it's totally fine. Let's, so if we do nothing right now, preparations will be made for these students to return in person next Tuesday, the 19th. I would entertain a motion currently. Member, did I lose everyone? Can you hear me?
No.
We lost you.
Oh, I lost you. Yeah, until just now.
Yeah, something weird happened. Okay. So what I was saying is, if we do nothing, we will have, these students, preparations will be made to return them to school next Tuesday. I would take a motion from a member now if we need, if anyone feels we need to do something different. And it's okay to keep talking about what you're thinking for a motion or not thinking.
This is Member Karen.
Member Karen, please.
I think that if we're going to try to put kids back in buildings next week, I think that we should push it to the Thursday. And here's why. If we make that decision today, that gives the superintendent five, four workdays to make sure that we have enough staff. It also gives us time to hear back from the Board of Health and call an emergency meeting on Wednesday night if we had to, if we absolutely had to. I think as a family, it would probably be very, very overwhelmingly frustrating to think that you're going back on Thursday and then hear Wednesday that, no, actually, you're not. So I'm not really sure how to change that part. But it's difficult to start moving forward with finding if we have enough staff, if we can't give them a date. If we say, oh, well, we want to start Thursday, the 20th, well, then we need to find out if all of our kids are even coming back. Which staff do we need? I think Thursday is the 21st. I'm losing track of dates. But I don't know. That's my thought process. Anybody else?
Member Ekstrom, thank you, Member Karen. Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
Well, Member Wall, go ahead. I've been yammering all night. You go first.
Well, I just wonder if we was planning on the 19th. Haven't preparations been started already to find out if we have staff?
That was the intention of our voting, to start on the 19th.
Okay. So if that is not taking place, then do we need to change it for that reason?
We would. Is it all right that I'm talking?
That's, can I just, I don't know that we haven't started that process. We just have no verification that we have or haven't, since we don't have the superintendent here tonight.
Well, and is it okay that I'm talking?
Yes.
Okay. The, so here's, because I have been thinking about this all day. So if the superintendent has not conveyed that message that we, in the vote that was taken last week, then we have a real problem. And that will be unrelated to the school committee, but would be under the purview of the superintendent needing to take action. If that action has not been taken, they cannot start on the 19th.
Does Pam Owen, do you know the answer to that question? Are you still with us? And do you know if those preparations have begun, assuming the 19th is the start date?
You can unmute yourself, Pam.
Can we contact the superintendent?
I do know that preparations started for a 19th opening. And I know that, I don't mean to call you out, Janet, but the Special Ed Director is here, and she knows that calls have gone out. I do know that staff are regularly being reported as quarantining or testing positive in the interim since we started preparations. So, and since we opened on December 2nd, we added students to the cohorts that weren't originally there in the first 38. So there is a bit of a mercurial quality to this consenting, then re-consenting parents to choose for in-person learning for the 19th. But, so, the pieces are moving. I just don't know how it's all falling out. I don't know whether you want to comment, Janet.
I would ask if Dr. Dickinson, if you are on the line with us and you're able to comment, I would appreciate that.
Hi, I am on the line, and so I can comment.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. And I don't have 100% of the information that you're looking for, but I do have some of it. Principals and staff has certainly been preparing. There are certain places where we know we have potential gaps. And I've been working with, depending on the situation, the administrator and the superintendent to try to figure some of that out. So some of that is still in process. And so it may, in certain cases, it may mean that, again, depending, well, it may mean that there, if there's a start date of the 19th, if that stays, or if it's changed slightly, staffing may affect when we actually can begin in person. But we would begin in person as soon as any gaps were filled. There is a certain piece of information that I don't know yet, which is who is quarantining at this point, and what is the status in each location. So hopefully by tomorrow, I'll have that information. And I think in terms of our staff ready, the agreement with the GEA is that staff receive three days' notice. And so I think, and this is, I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'm not sure if my interpretation of this is accurate, but that, like, from tonight, then if the announcement's made officially tomorrow, we start next week, then we have the three days. But I think that was the discussion I recall from the last school committee meeting. So that's why when people talk about us not knowing exactly how many staff may not be able to come in, it's because of that notice period. So today, we had an extremely well-attended COVID health safety training. It was a second workshop that Nurse Leader Pam Owen and BCBA Celeste Lunt have provided for our district. And there were about 120 staff members. It was extremely good. And what was particularly beneficial was that our experience in December, although short, there were situations from that that could be discussed to help to prepare. So I don't know that that gave you the definitive answer that you want, but that's where we are.
Thank you. No, it's helpful to have more context. I appreciate that. Do any of the school committee members have questions for Dr. Dickinson?
Would it be helpful, would it be helpful to delay it until Thursday for you, since you're the one scrambling around?
I can't say it wouldn't be helpful. I am, it would be helpful, but on the same token, I am certainly a constant purveyor of the message of how severely these students need in-person learning. So it would help because instead of delaying the start for some students and not others, we may be on it or even playing field, but I say that for sure until we have more specific staff information.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it would be helpful. I don't know if it's the most beneficial thing to do for all of the students at large who are in this group.
Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
Well, part of the rationale for us voting on the, for the 19th to be the start date during the meeting on the 6th is because we wanted, we were concerned that if we didn't make the decision until the 13th, then we would not have enough time to go back on the 19th. So when we made that decision, it was modus operandi of, yes, we fully intend to go back on the 19th. So make sure everyone's clear on that. And if, but however, that being said, if we needed to delay to the 21st, I wouldn't, I'm concerned that we're okay with starting sports on the 18th and 19th, but we can't actually start educating students in person until the 21st. I don't like the optics of it. I don't understand why we can have people doing both contact sports, but we couldn't. So that's the conversation in my head.
Sure. Other discussion from school committee members?
This is Member Karen again. Sorry. The mayor also had her hand up.
Go ahead. Okay. And then, and then Mayor Weider-Gartner.
Okay. To be, I hear what you're saying, Member Ekstrom. And to be clear, my reason for delaying to the 21st is truly more about making sure that the staff is all ready. There is the piece of wanting one more report from the Board of Health, but we have opted against what they have said before, and I don't know that we wouldn't necessarily do that. But I just think it would just give them another day to really be settled, because there are the people who are coming in and out of quarantine. Things are changing. It's an ever-moving target. But I would vote for the 19th if that's what everybody feels is the right decision. I'm not against it. I just feel like, let's give them an extra day or two. It's more about the staffing issue, which we don't have with the sports, because they're all coaches who are deciding to go or not. They have that, so.
That is the, yeah, that is one of the biggest differences there. Mayor Weider-Gartner, please, go ahead.
I just want to support Karen, Katie's first comments regarding the 21st, and now her most recent comments, as well as Janet Dickinson's. I really do, I think we can afford those two or three days and make sure now that it's definitively, from whoever would do it, conveyed to the staff that the 21st, they have to be ready to come in. We have to have adequate staffing level. So I would be strongly in favor of changing the date to the 21st.
I do, I do sense, thank you, I do sense the committee moving in a specific direction. So I would, at this point, ask, before we do any further discussion, let's have a motion on the table.
I may be able to do one. I just may need a second here. I thought I might just refer back to the motion we made last time and update that. So I'm just looking for that.
Okay, good.
That was at the...
So that would have been on 1/6. It is in the materials 1.
Yes, I'm going to copy that into the chat here and then use it to...
I do see chat that is not school committee members or the recording secretary. I'm going to remind folks, the chat is not available. If I could shut it off, I would. It's not appropriate to have discussions on the side during school committee. Just a reminder.
Chair, one suggestion I was going to have is if we can make an announcement about that at the start of the meeting, because...
Absolutely right. Yes.
Yeah. And I haven't, I can compose something for you, too, including your starting remarks.
Thank you. Okay. So I do see yours in the chat now.
Yeah. So what if I, what if I move that we resume Phase Two in-person learning on January...
21st.
21st, with the understanding that a further extension may be needed.
So moved.
And that was Mayor Weider-Gartner with a second from, I'm not sure, Member Ekstrom. Just any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead. Member Johnson Musad.
I just feel like one of our jobs on the school committee as leaders in the community is to try to try to point out some of the systems and the larger systems and dynamics that come into play in making these kinds of decisions. And I thought Nurse Owen's comments about the, what a game changer the testing will be when we, when we're able to just kind of do ongoing sampling of our school community on a regular basis. And just to point out that that is the direct impact on our, at our local community on decisions made at the federal level. And I just feel like it's important to note that dynamic, our country with the right leadership could have made that investment, and we could have had that up in writing at the start of the, of the school year, and we still don't have it. So I just feel it's important, as we're making these decisions, to note the larger policies and decisions that are made that impact these kinds of, right down to the granular of whether we're, we even know whether we can open on the 26th or the 28th.
Thank you, Member Johnson Musad. Further discussion?
Weider-Gartner?
Go ahead. Mayor Weider-Gartner, please.
I would just like to say, in support of what Member Johnson just said, Johnson Musad just said, but we did start vaccinations today, the 21st, if I'm not mistaken. Happens to be the last day that we will be doing the Phase One, which will then be followed by additional vaccinations. So to the extent now, those are all first-time vaccinations. So we go back in February for our second one. But just to know, I just want everyone to know that people in our community, many of whom do have children in our community, not all of them from Greenfield, but we know that we all go from town to town, are being vaccinated. And we will, as a city, continue to do that up through March. And I think that hearkens to a brighter day. Now, I can't say that everybody who will be involved in that student cohort that we're talking about, anyone in those, those families will have vaccinations. But just to know that there is a brighter, a little bit of a brighter horizon going forward than back in January, early January, when we made that decision.
Thank you, Mayor Weider-Gartner. Other discussion? So it sounds like we're ready to vote on the motion. It's only been a couple of minutes, so I'm hoping we don't need to reread it again. Does anyone need it read again? Okay. So let's, I saw a couple of nods. So let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Did you?
Oh, she seems to be frozen. We'll come back.
No, I'm not. But come back to me anyway.
Oh, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiroti?
Abstain.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weider-Gartner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
I'm also going to abstain.
The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you especially to our staff in the schools that we put on the spot to speak tonight. I really appreciate them stepping up and giving some input into that decision-making process. Okay, so we are moving on to Item 7 on the agenda, which is our subcommittee assignments for 2021. Someone shuffling papers with their microphone on.
Chair, I just want to remind you, the executive session we're planning this evening, and it is, I don't know that you've made an announcement regarding...
I have not made an announcement regarding that. I was kind of hoping we'd get through the whole agenda. Wouldn't have to make an announcement. But we are, we are hard-stopping this meeting, the public portion of this meeting, at 8:00 p.m. tonight, to give us an opportunity to have a planned executive session that needs to start at 8:15. So we will get through as much as we can. And anything that we don't get through this evening, we will table for the, excuse me, for our next meeting, which, at the rate we're going, could be in just a few days. Okay. Subcommittee assignments for 2021. So a little bit about subcommittee assignments. I'm going to ask first for Secretary Johnson Musad to put... Johnson Musad to put an updated spreadsheet of this information. Uh, he's going to share it to the screen, which should work, so people can see it. Um, thank you. I can see it. Hopefully that means everyone else can. Uh, this is slightly different than the materials that were, uh, presented in the, for the public session, um, in the, in the posting and the agenda for tonight's meeting. This will go into the minutes as the updated version. Uh, it is not uncommon for certain work of the school committee to be a moving target all of the time, or some of the time, and it's that way in this case as well. Uh, these are, get done, um, at the discretion, these assignments are done at the discretion of the chair, and then the chair brings them to the school committee for, uh, a vote. And so hopefully folks have had a chance to look through this. I know, um, I was contacted by member Wall, who never misses a thing, and I appreciate that about her, that I'd left one, uh, committee off of the list entirely. So that's back on there. Um, and we made a couple other changes, uh, today. Uh, and I would actually like a motion to approve the 2021 subcommittee assignments.
So moved. Sorry, I was unmute.
Member Ekstrom with the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Hollins.
Second from member Hollins. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I'm hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, um, member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, yes. Chair Poiety?
Uh, yes.
Uh, member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could go on record as the quickest agenda item of 2021. It's still early, but we'll, we'll see. Um, thank you all, and thank you for your service. Uh, that work is important and often does not get the limelight of, you know, our monthly or more meetings. Uh, okay. We are next moving into the superintendent's search process, uh, item 8 on the agenda, which is a perfect segue because on the list that, uh, was in the packet and also on the, uh, list that, uh, member Johnson Musad shared, uh, for all to see, it was identified that, uh, member Wall, member Jean Wall will be, uh, chairing our superintendent's search process. I'm so grateful that she said yes to what is going to be a, a huge job. Um, and as I said to her, no disrespect to any of our other members, but I said, "Member Wall, you are the most, uh, professional, uh, and kind member of the school committee. You need to be the one chair, uh, chairing this search." And she graciously said, "Yes." Uh, and many people have, have a, a great deal of interest in this process. We all in the school committee have a great deal of interest. Our parents and students do as well. We're looking forward to getting started. Uh, what we, what I am asking member Wall to do as a first step with this committee, uh, is actually, we have, um, gone out and gotten, um, proposals from, uh, firms to run the search with us. And we will have presentations from, uh, those folks, uh, to us and to decide, uh, on who will assist us with the search, and we will move forward for there. Uh, folks spoke in public comment this, this after, or this evening about, uh, wanting to be involved and who should be involved in that process. And we will look to the guidance of the search firm that we work with to help us make those decisions. But without question, if you have seen, um, the search processes in Greenfield or other municipalities in the past, uh, it will be as open as we can possibly make it, as public and transparent as we can possibly make it. And, uh, because I know, uh, member Wall, and I know all of our school committee members, it will also be as efficient as we can possibly make it. And, um, I'm looking forward to getting started. I don't think we need a motion on this. We just voted, uh, to approve it basically in the last agenda item. But I would take any, uh, comments from school committee members. Looks like the mayor and then, uh, Secretary Johnson Musad. Go ahead.
I just was curious as to what the scope of work for, uh, member Wall is. Um, I'm hearing, I think, that, um, she is in charge of the finding of the search firms. Is, does it go beyond that? Is there a choice of committee members, et cetera, et cetera? It's, it's a little unclear to me, and maybe to others. I don't know.
Thank you for that question. Um, and maybe, uh, I'll, I'll have, uh, member Johnson Musad ask his question first, and then we can talk about that. Or did you have a comment?
It was a comment, and it was ba, it was, um, basically just that, um, I know that, you know, however, this committee ends up getting formed exactly. Uh, not all, obviously not all the school committee members will be on it. But, um, I think it's going to be important that we discuss as a full committee, um, the, well, uh, touching on what Mayor Weider Gardner just had, the scope of work for the, the group, as well as, you know, what we're looking for in a superintendent. Some of, no, obviously not getting in, that the committee's job will be to get into the, the details. But, um, there should be discussion and checkpoints along the way with school committee so that we're really involved every step of the way.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. And we will have the search firm to help us guide, uh, with all of those things. They will, including helping to, to identify, define the scope of work for the chair and the other committee members. Um, we are not experts on this process. Uh, that is why we're going to look to folks who have done it before, make it their work to do it. Uh, and, um, they will help to make sure that our goals as a school committee, our priorities regarding the transparency of the process, the scope of the search for candidates, all of that reflects what we have discussed as a school committee, what we've heard from our, uh, our, our community that's important. Um, and I am certain there will be not only checkpoints along the way, but that there will also be plenty of opportunities to find, um, to, to hear from the public directly, hear from school committee members directly, what they, uh, need and want from the process. Other comments?
Comment from Hollins?
Please, member Hollins, go ahead.
Um, if it's okay, I'd like to say what I think the, uh, chair of a superintendent search committee does. The, um, the assignment you've mentioned is checking in with the firms that have, you've approached, and maybe, uh, organizing for a recommendation or how you're going to hear from them. The chair of a superintendent's search committee usually facilitates those meetings, uh, may facilitate gathering names of people who want to be on the search committee and making a recommendation based on who's applied, and, uh, primarily as a liaison to the search group, because you have to initially send in information. If you've looked at brochures, you know, how many schools, what's, they gather information, and you need a point person for this. But those are generally the roles. I also want to say that we, we may have a lot of information on that, uh, access superintendent's search, which follow this type of process, where you have to define your school district and how many schools you have, and, you know, how many school committee members and standing committees and, uh, typical information. We may already have that available, depending what search firm you use. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Ekstrom. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely, member Ekstrom, go ahead.
Um, I also, I want to say to the committee and just the public in general, I wouldn't expect that member Wall would be doing this in a vacuum by any means. Uh, you know, it like, if she wants some help and says, "Susan, I need some help," then I will say, "Okay, when and where?" And I, and I expect that that would be the response from everyone else as well. I could be wrong. I don't want to speak for anyone. But, um, there's, I, I wouldn't be comfortable letting, leaving someone off to their own on this, because it's just, it's a big job, and you need, and you need people to help you out with. So that's all.
Comment, one other comment?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's okay. Another part we haven't exactly talked about, but what goes along with this, uh, is also transition planning. Uh, superintendents usually have in their contracts, even when you finally select someone, they haven't, may have a notice requirement. So things come up where things may not be, be able to start on exactly the date you thought for one reason or another. So part is also thinking how you're going to cover during a transition. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to say that I expect, that I expect to have input from everyone in Greenfield who's interested in who the new superintendent is going to be, and I want to hear from them. So you have my email address. You're welcome to email me with your thoughts, and I will answer them. I mean, I'm, I'm honored to have this job, and I will do my best to get someone that all of Greenfield likes. Thank you.
Thank you, member Wall.
I have a comment.
Yes, please. Secretary Johnson Musad.
Um, just, I, or I guess it's also partly a question, but, um, you know, this will be my, my first time being on a committee selecting a superintendent, but it's not for some of, of us. And I'm, I'm wondering, I know Mayor Weider Gardner's been on the committee when a superintendent has been selected. Is there, is there anyone else on the committee who has that experience? Member Hollins? Okay, great. Thank you. I was just curious.
Do superintendent's search.
What did you say, member Hollins?
I chaired a superintendent's search once.
Great.
Excellent.
I've had the pleasure of choosing two superintendents for the school district. So one a long time ago and one more recently.
Awesome. Any other further discussion about this? Okay, so we'll be reporting back regularly. It'll likely be an agenda item on each, at least each regular meeting, perhaps not every special meeting. Um, but we will continue to keep, uh, folks updated with, as the process unfolds. Okay, so the next two items, uh, we have about 15 minutes left, and I think we can probably tackle these. So I'm looking at item 9 and item 10. Uh, these are both policy updates. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll do them, introduce both of them separately, but I'd like to kind of try to tackle them together. I think you'll see what I mean in a second. So the first one, policy EBCD. This is a policy on emergency closures, and the powers given to the superintendent regarding emergency closures. Um, and this was used, um, right before the, the holiday break by the superintendent to make a, a decision to shut down, uh, our Phase 2 in-person learning for the, the students that we're, we've been talking about, uh, tonight as well. Uh, um, when I, I'll just put this tenant reference, because I, this policy EBCD, thankfully, I don't know exactly which policy that is off the top of my head. Um, I went to look at it, uh, and I found this policy to be woefully inadequate for the circumstances we have currently, and it needs some updating. Uh, it was, i- it does not reference anything related to a pandemic, uh, or a health, uh, situation. I would start there. Um, and related to, uh, the public comment policy, uh, the second item there, we've gone around and around and around. The public has had lots of comments about public comment, both to us in public comment and over email, um, and, uh, i- in person, in some cases. Uh, there are opinions about our policy. Um, and what I would like to do with both of these is to ask for a motion from a school committee member, uh, to assign, review and updating of both policies to the policy subcommittee, and then we can discuss.
So moved.
Mayor Ekstrom? And is there a second to that?
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Mayor Weider Gardner. Okay, so now we can discuss. Um, and I, I'll, I'll just open it up for discussion, see where it goes. Anyone?
Hollins?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Um, I read over the, the first policy, emergency closing. Um, and I read the whole thing. I think what's, this is my opinion, I think what's currently there is accurate, and it's generally talking to a one-day situation. You know, there's bad weather, there's something of that sort, there's a death or something. And I agree with you, it's inadequate for the situation we find ourselves. What I, what I thought was missing was something that mentions that situations may occur where the superintendent and/or the school committee believe the school committee should make closure and reopening decisions, such as an ongoing public health situation or the absence of a superintendent-level administrator with authority to close the schools. It occurred to me that the two situations, it, it's a superintendent assignment, you know, but there are situations, in this case, superintendent asks the school committee to step in. You have an ongoing health crisis. We've decided, we voted to make these decisions. But another situation that could occur is if, for some reason, there's no one assigned at the superintendent level to make school closure decisions. Other people just can't step in, and that might be the second time a school committee. So I agree with you, and that's what I think is missing. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, Mayor Weider Gardner, you had a comment too as well?
No, not about that, not about that.
Okay. Other, other comments about, uh, the emergency closure policy or about the public comment policy? Mayor Weider Gardner?
I can speak to the public comment policy.
Please, go ahead.
And I, um, I empathize with everybody in the public who feels the need to, um, to speak to the school committee, because it's important, uh, that we are able to hear from them, literally hear from them versus, uh, emails, because sometimes people haven't been notified in time or something, um, or have a thought, but they haven't emailed it to us and they want to come to a meeting. This is unusual to have this many months of virtual meetings. Typically, we would be in person and people would show up. Um, but at the same time, many, many, um, years of being on boards, municipal boards and commissions, this policy of speaking to items on the agenda is not unusual at all. In fact, I would say the bulk of the boards and commissions in the city of Greenfield have that as their ground rule for discussion. Um, so, um, I have not had a chance to reread this policy to see if there's something missing in it that people don't understand. But at the same time, that is, um, at the, at the end of the day, this board also has work to do, as you can tell by the size of our agenda tonight. Um, so it's important, I think, for the public to be able to speak. But I also think it's important for us to limit it, not the, not the, you know, limit the, um, discussion and, and comment to what we're discussing that evening, so that we, it can be relative to our discussion when we actually meet on a business item. Um, if you wanted, as a committee, to designate a certain meeting or two out of our lengthy meeting schedules, hopefully we'll go back to more regular, less frequent ones, but, you know, who knows when that will happen. For, you know, free discussion, I suppose, or something like that, uh, you know, that might be worthy of a discussion. But in general, I think it's worked well over time to have it be limited to the amount of, to what's on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Weider Gardner. Uh, but, member Ekstrom and then, uh, Secretary Johnson Musad.
Um, I do want to mention just for people who are listening, like, why can't the committee just make this decision themselves? The, um, the reality is when we change a policy, it has to go to the policy committee, and then it comes as a first read, and we make a decision as a group based on the first read, if it needs to be revised, or, uh, should stand, or whatever that decision is. So, so anyone who's wondering, why can't they make that decision tonight? That's the reason what that is, why that is. Um, and I had something else that I can't remember, so please, Glenn, go ahead.
Go ahead, member Johnson Musad.
See, okay, I unmuted myself. Um, I guess, yes. Um, well, I think one thing that's important to note is that the chair has pretty broad discretion with this policy in terms of, um, if there's more time on the agenda or whatever, or to take a very expansive view of what is on the agenda and what isn't, and how things relate, um, member comments relate. I think that's one thing that's important to note. The other thing that I think is important is that, um, some committees have, uh, standing item for new business, where, um, committee members can publicly, uh, come forward with ideas for agenda items. And my, my biggest concern with this, um, with this policy is that what we don't discuss is sometimes, as, and what isn't on our agenda... is that what we don't discuss is sometimes, and what isn't on our agenda is sometimes as important, I think, for public deliberation and advocacy as, uh, what is on the agenda. So, um, so one possibility, I think, would be to, uh, to have an item on our agenda, maybe not at every meeting, but occasionally for new business where members can propose items. And if new business is on the agenda, then members of the public could, uh, communicate things that they wish to see on the agenda. And I guess in, I mean, I, you know, I, I, I guess I would urge us as a committee to take a fairly expansive view of, of this because, um, uh, just because I, I think that transparency and the public voice is important and that, um, there is, there's something different that happens with public comment versus emailing your committee members. Um, it's, the audience for these comments isn't just the school committee, but the public at large. And so, you know, there's, you know, maybe a broad discussion happening in the community about, um, about MCAS, and, um, we're not, it's not on our agenda. And, and so this could be a way not just to communicate to us that they want to see more of that on the agenda, but also to communicate more to the other members of the public about, uh, particular items that might be interesting and important for student, to, to improve student outcomes. So I just hate to see us shut ourselves off from, uh, community input and community momentum around different issues that could be really valuable to, uh, our student outcomes, which should always be at the center of our, um, decision-making.
I saw member Hollins and then member Ekstrom.
Yes, I'd like to follow up with, um, Glenn's comment. I, what, I'm, I don't know how new business is interpreted, if it's new action items that are on the agenda. Sometimes business activity is, you know, old business, new business. But I do think, uh, something like that, topics for next agenda, um, should be on the agenda for two reasons. One, this is really the business meeting of the body, which is all of us, and we may collectively really want something to come up on the agenda. When we write individually to a chairperson, any chairperson, doesn't mean we all know what, what any of us think, and we all might agree that something is really important. So I think since it's our meeting as a whole, it's important to have that as an agenda item. And if it were on there as, you know, topics for next agenda, which is a quick item, at least people, uh, speaking could say, "This is a topic I'd like to see you address." The other thing is, some time ago, I've spoken a couple times, that I think at least we need to have a clear way that we agree to respond to people. If someone writes to us and says, "I'm worried about something or other happening on the so-and-so park with my children," or whatever, it just should be some way to say, "We forward, we forwarded your concern to so-and-so." We should at least not let community concerns just drop, even if we don't act on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ekstrom?
Uh, I remembered what I, the other topic, the other piece I was going to talk about. Um, so the chair and I have actually discussed this sort of off and on for a while. And what chair pointed out today is that she feels like this is, um, actually more rooted in something else, which could be a lack of communication from the committee or the district to the community overall. And I don't disagree with that. I think there is, there is some disconnect between the community and the district or the school committee or whatever that, and inadvertently, not because of, not by any design or anything like that. But I, but I do think the, the number of voices that we've had in response to this is, is somewhat indicative of that. And we've talked about ways to make it easier to, um, meet with committee members or speak with us, sort of just in general public, like, um, and I actually had a teacher recommend this to me, was, you know, maybe once a month, one of the committee members has an open house at one of the schools, and people can come over and talk to them or whatever. You wouldn't have the full committee in front of you, but you would be, you would have sort of open access, if you will, to a school committee member. Um, you know, things along those lines. So I think that there, I, I agreed with Amy when she said that this is, there's more to this than just, "We want to talk more during public session."
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, any other further comments? Remember, was that member Wall?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that allowing the community three minutes to speak is not much, giving up much time. And I would hope that those committee members that want to talk to us about the, I mean, the community members that want to talk to us every time about the same subject would realize that it's probably going to be 10 o'clock before we finish meeting tonight, and that they would limit it. But I, I, I kind of think that giving people three minutes to speak on any subject that they feel strongly enough about to come to us and speak is not a huge thing for us to give up that much time on a, a school committee meeting.
Thank you, member Wall.
One other comment?
Member Hollins, quickly, go ahead.
I just want to say, if you're looking at this topic, there is another policy called communicating with the public. I don't have the number offline, but you might want to throw it into the mix.
Thank you.
I think it's section K. I'm not sure.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. Um, and this is not the end of the discussion. Um, I, I, I appreciate that everyone had something different to add. There was a lot of thought put into that. Um, and, uh, in the interest of time, I would ask that we, uh, move to a vote on this. If the vote is voted down, we'll try again. But really, all we're doing at this point is asking the policy committee to meet and look at these and draft something that can come back here for further discussion. So hopefully this is a vote we can, we can, uh, make happen. Uh, Secretary Johnson Musad, would you do the roll call, please?
I will. Am I off of mute?
Yes.
Great. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Awesome.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That was quick, too.
That was, yes, that was great. So we did finish our agenda in perfect time. We, um, will need to open an executive session, uh, and then close the public session. We are moving to executive session, but not returning for any, uh, votes or updates after the executive session. So this is the end of the public portion of the meeting tonight. Do I have a, uh, oh, executive session, uh, will be called tonight for MGLC 30A subsection 21 exemption reasons number two and three to conduct, number two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And exemption three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the chair does declare. Uh, so I would ask for a motion to open the public session, please.
So moved.
Executive session, sorry. Open the executive session. I heard Mayor Rita Gardner and a second from, uh, member Johnson Musad. Uh, and can I get a roll call vote on, uh, opening the executive session, please?
Yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member, um, Mayor Rita Gardner? Oh, member Wall, sorry. Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then, uh, motion to adjourn the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Member Wall and a second?
Second. Johnson Musad.
Member Johnson Musad and a roll call, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. We adjourned 8:02 PM. Uh, I will open the executive session for the members now. Uh, please be on by 8:15.